Evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting on May 2nd, 2022. We'll call this meeting to order. The first order of business is our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. So, tonight, we have Pastor, Father, excuse me, Father, why did I say Father? Father Peter from the St. Anthony's Catholic Church here in town. So, thank you, Father, for being here.
Don't promote me yet to become a pastor.
And please stay standing, because we'll do, standing? Standing, because we're going to do the pledge of allegiance afterwards. Thank you.
We stand before you, Almighty Father, conscious of our weaknesses, but aware that we gather to fulfill our duties in your name. Come to us, remain with us, and enlighten our hearts. Give us light and strength to know your will, to make it our own, and to live it in our lives and for our community. Guide us by your wisdom. Support us by your power, for you are God, sharing the glory of Father and Son. You desire justice for all. Enable us to uphold the rights of others. Do not allow us to be misled by ignorance or corrupted by fear or favor. Unite us to yourself in the bond of love, and keep us faithful to all that is true. As we gather to fulfill our duties in your name, may we temper justice with love, so that all our discussions and reflections may be pleasing to you, and earn the reward promised to good and faithful servants. We ask of this through your powerful name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father. Thank you, Mr. Powell. All right. Let the roll call show that we are all here except Lisa, and I think she has an excuse. So, I'd entertain a motion to excuse her for tonight.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so please note Lisa is excused. So, when I'm not here in October, are you going to excuse me?
Probably not. Maybe. We'll see.
Okay. It'll only be my second meeting I've missed. Um, all right. Sorry, I diverted. Minutes.
Roll call, good.
Go ahead, Mr. Powell.
No.
Oh, yeah, we already did roll call.
Okay, everybody's here.
Yep.
Okay, the, we need to approve the city council regular meeting minutes from April 18th, and they are appropriate now to be approved. We also want to consider accepting the youth commission meeting minutes of March 12th, 2022, and we'll accept those for the record. Want to consider accepting the Casa Grande Planning and Zoning Commission minutes from March 3rd, 2022, and the same, we want to accept and record those.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. Next, there are claims to the city, item D.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated April 13th to April 26th, 2022, as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the claims are approved. Next is our meeting agenda approval. Is there any changes, Mr. Rains?
Mr. Mayor, staff has no changes.
Okay, anyone on?
We do have an executive session.
Oh, right, thank you. Thanks for reminding me. All right, so I guess I will move, then I will suggest that we move our reports, which is item N, to follow, or to precede item M. So, we'll move item N just before M. N, M?
Good plan.
Say that fast three times. Okay, any other changes? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve as amended.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the agenda as presented, with the change from reports to in front of the executive session.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the meeting agenda is approved. We do have a special presentation tonight. Richard?
Sir.
Look at that.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It is with my extreme pleasure and honor to be here with you tonight to share with you this award that we received from the Arizona Association for Economic Development for the Economic Development Distinguished in Economics, Economic Development, for an organization, the Outstanding Organization of the Year Award. And the reason I'm so excited about this is because it goes to the heart of economic development, which is it's a team effort. So, this is not just an award that they give to an individual, but they give to an organization. In this case, it's between 50 and 100,000. So, we were up against Goodyear and Avondale. So, we did have some good competition in that. So, it gives me an opportunity to share with you all the hard work that goes in to economic development, all of our successes lately. Lucid, you can track it all the way back to Franklin Foods, and Tractor Supply Company, and all the way back to Walmart. It takes, it takes a team. And so, I've had the honor and privilege to work with the best team in the state, I think it's safe to say, and I argue with anybody who would disagree with me. We may be small, but we're mighty. So, with Kevin, and Duane, and Terry, and Paul, and Joe, and James, and their teams, and then we've got Chief Keene, and Mike Webster from the Fire Department, we've got Brian Territor from the Building Department, we've got Brett and Mark, who play a vital role in working with the legal documents all the way to our leadership, with Larry and Stephen, who were banner carriers, and to you. So, tonight, this is about, I guess, us, in the sense that nothing can get done as well as it has been done without this great team effort. So, kudos to you all, and thank you very much for your, for your help.
Congratulations. Thank you, Richard. We'll put it in a prominent location.
And Richard, thank you. You are the leader of this, of this effort, so.
As the leader of the economic development.
Department.
Group. Well done. Thank you, Richard. Isn't this like the second time we've won this? Or, no, you got it as an individual one time. So, this is the first time as a organization. All right, well, still very good. So, congratulations. All right, next is the consent agenda, item G. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there anyone here tonight, council or public, who would like to remove something from the consent agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none, then I will ask for a roll call vote of the consent agenda items.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Now can I get a roll call vote, please? I was anxious. I'm trying to get to seven o'clock. The game started already.
Counting member Lavender.
Yes.
Counting member Huddleston.
Yes.
Counting member McBride.
Yes.
Counting member Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right. Next is our public comments section. This is item H. I do have a speaker card here tonight. I will open the floor to everyone, or anyone who would like to speak, but I do have Gordon Baker here. Gordon, if you would like to approach the podium, and please, again, state your name and your address for us, and please keep your comments to three minutes. Also, understand that it's not an agenda, an agenda item, so as it not being on the agenda, we can't have a discussion, but we can direct staff to follow up with you.
Understood.
Thank you.
Again, my name is Gordon Baker. I live at 104 East Moonlight Trail in Vilago. Casa Grande, of course, 85122. Phone number, area code 415-652-3663. And the issue that I have is, the community has, is, I'd call it exhibition drag racing at the intersection, you're shaking your head, at the intersection of Lake Shore and Vilago Parkway. Those of us that live along Vilago Parkway here, the cars racing and doing donuts in that particular intersection. And unfortunately, on a couple of occasions, when I came home at night on Pinell, there have been cars that have physically did the drag race and went across both lanes of Pinell into the airport. They couldn't stop. If it had hit a Walmart truck or something like that, there would have been a problem. And I'd just like to bring that to the council's attention, and I'm not really sure where to go after this. So, that is our complaint. I represent the community that represents, that's along Vilago Parkway.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. We will definitely have staff follow up on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, anytime you see that, you should also report that to the police, please.
We have.
Okay. Well, continue, continue to do so. That's all I'm saying. Just bug them, okay?
Thank you.
Just continue to do it. Thank you. Here's the, that's his information. We'll have somebody follow up with you, too, Mr. Gordon. Anyone else? Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to council? Floor is open. Okay, seeing none, then we're going to close the public comments, and we'll move to Ward of Contracts, I, one. Kevin?
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council award a contract for the Pierc Park Generator Replacement Services to Desert View Systems, Incorporated. This agreement would provide services for removal and replacement of the Pierc Park Lift Station Emergency Operations System. The primary piece of equipment is the emergency generator as part of that system, and that's in an amount not to exceed $90,000. And we are looking for the, the quote amount of $70,900, with an additional $19,100 as owner's contingency. As this is a very old facility, once we get into the replacement of this equipment, it's difficult to know what we're going to find as we start to uncover things. We just like to make sure we have a good buffer, so that we have the budget authority to get the project completed. We did solicit qualifications of contractors for this, and had two firms submit, and Desert View Systems was the highest qualified contractor for this job. So, we do have budget authority. $68,808 is from our lift station rehabilitation funds, and then we're transferring additional funds from our operating budget of $21,192 to complete this project. This is a lift station not for our wastewater, but this is our stormwater lift station that lifts from the flood plain that is just to the east of Dorothy Powell, and then it pumps that out back into the street to continue its, on its way. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, I don't see any, Kevin, so thank you. Gloria, can I please get an, no, resolution number, please?
Resolution number 5412. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Desert View Systems, Inc., to remove and replace the emergency diesel generator for the Pierc Park Stormwater Lift Station, authorizing expenditure of public funds, and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Desert View Systems, Inc.
Mayor McFarland, I move with approval of resolution number 5412 as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Counting member Lavender.
Yes.
Counting member Huddleston.
Yes.
Counting member McBride.
Yes.
Counting member Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next item is I, two. And I think, Judge?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of our council. Staff are requesting mayor and council to consider the approval of ordinance number 3330, accepting a proposal from Exhibit One Corporation for the Casa Grande Municipal Court Audio Visual System Upgrade. Staff did issue an RFP for this project. We had three responses. The approved budget, or the budget authority for this project is $120,000. We had one proposal that was under budget. The other two were significantly over budget, and that is one of the factors as to why staff chose to go with Exhibit One for this project. Staff are requesting that we approve a contract for the full budget authority for the $120,000, even though the bid was for $83,000 and change. Staff are planning on reusing some equipment in this project. The vendor will be testing the equipment that's going to be reused, and if it's not fully functional, then that equipment will be replaced, as well as part of this project. Therefore, we may need additional expenditures to cover those costs. For example, I know we have one Goosnick microphone that is not operating functional. I believe we have somewhere in the neighborhood of 15. So, we know we need to replace one. Once they start testing, then we might find that we need to replace additional equipment as well. So, with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that any of you may have.
I just, I had one, Judge. On the, does this not include upgrading the recording device, or?
We, we, we upgraded to Liberty about three or four years ago, so that system has been replaced previously.
And so, the new stuff will all coincide together?
Yeah, it'll all integrate with that. With the upgrade to Liberty, there was some additional hardware at that time that, that was purchased. So, that's pretty, it's new, considering that the building is going to be about 12 years old. The equipment that we're replacing would be for both courtrooms. One of the courtrooms, I mentioned in the past, it's inoperable at this time. The equipment that's in there is not functioning. When you turn on the system, it squeals. So, obviously, we need to get that system replaced.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no more questions, then I'll call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 3330, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Exhibit One Corp., DBA ELE1 Audio Visual Technologies for the Casa Grande Municipal Court Audio Visual System Upgrade, authorizing expenditure of public funds, and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to E1 Audio Visual Technologies.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of ordinance number 3330 as presented.
Second. All right, a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Counting member Lavender.
Yes.
Counting member Huddleston.
Yes.
Counting member McBride.
Yes.
Counting member Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. All right, so that really concludes most of our business, or a lot of our business tonight. We will, we're going to move to item N, which is our reports. I'm going to start with you, Mr. Huddleston.
Huddleston. Thank you. Not a lot to report. I did attend the CAG meeting last week and represented the city. There was a lot of discussion about things that I think you've already briefed us on, Mayor. Senate Bill 1239, which is TJ Schopps, trying to get the, the funding for the I-10 widening in place, so that, so that the state may apply for the mega grant with the, with the feds for I-10 widening. So, that's high on the priority list. We also talked about the, well, excuse me, the PRTA, and the importance of that being on the ballot this, this coming November. I also wanted to mention in one of the city manager's weekly reports, we got a copy of the housing market study done by land advisors. And just a reminder, for the first time, the median income, annual income in our community is lower than what can afford the median price of a house. So, we're having more and more people that cannot afford to get into housing, and I think it, it falls partially upon us to look at options for that, whether it be rentals or, or more affordable housing. There's a lot of products out there, and I think it behooves us to look at, look at all of those and, and try to help our community get, get in housing. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Mr. Powell?
Well, I had a sad experience at home, and this has nothing to do with the city, but the, we have three dogs, and one of the females, the mother of one of the other pups, passed away overnight. And we have a little graveyard with dogs in about, in the backyard. And her pup, right now, is just looking for her. He's walking around, trying to figure out where she went to. He'll get used to it, but it was very, very sad, and my daughter and the ones that had gone back to Florida were disappointed, but weren't able to be there to see it. So, passed to you.
Sorry to hear that. Matt?
I have a few things, Mayor. I'll try to keep it brief. We had a terrible tragedy in our community, as you know, with the two young women, but out of that, it's encouraging to see how our community came together in light of this tragedy, with people donating, restaurants, all kinds of businesses, individuals, and the police department, excellent job. I know they were working hard, and I appreciate the update that we got. I know they couldn't say anything, and I'm glad, because obviously, they did a great job in apprehending the suspects. So.
They got him.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
I said apprehended the suspect. That means they got him, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Translated.
But just again, that, anything positive out of that is the fact that this entire community put everything aside and came together for that. On better notes, I went to the ribbon cutting of the Nation of Barbers and Beauty, and it's a new salon that opened, but it's a training salon. So, haircuts are cheap, even, especially mine, they said. But, you know, they were donating some of their proceeds the first day to those two families. But the neat thing is, it's another opportunity for people to get an education without going to college. It's some other kind of career technical education. I talked to a guy I actually went to high school with. He was there. He says, I'm almost done. And he goes, anyone in this profession has almost unlimited earning potential. You know, it's good to hear. And they were very encouraging, and the owners are local. It's great. A lot of local can be good community members. And then, I got to help with the ribbon cutting. Thanks, Mayor. And thankfully, yeah, the Arizona Youth Government Summit by the Youth Commission was, went off perfect. I won't say perfectly, but fantastically, because nothing's ever perfect. But it looked great to everyone involved. I have so many people to thank. They do, especially Gloria and Myra and her department for helping with all the snacks, foods, logistics, everything. I might have forgotten some people, but Craig, Donna, they came, welcomed, hosted an event, TJ Schopps, Kent Volkmer, Tisa Ellsworth, Eric Daniels from Coolidge, Roberto Mendez, and Judge Bill O'Neil. And a lot of those were on the Young Elected Official Panel, which I was not invited to be on. So, that kind of hurts. But anyway, and then at the, the community centers where we hosted it, we had kids from the Valley, Chandler, Phoenix, Governor's Youth Commission, Gila River, our kids were there, and Aaron and his staff at the center were fantastic, helping us. They were there all day. And we had a mocktail hour, and there was judging, and the mayor placed in the top four of the judging.
There were only four entries.
I won't tell you where he came in, but he was in the top four. However, he went there that, he went there that morning in. That night transformed into Twinkle Toes McFarland.
That's right.
Just want to say Dancing for Our Stars Boys and Girls Club was way better than I expected. It was huge success. It was so much fun. And you did, I was impressed, Mayor. You did a great job. I'll let, I'm sure she's going to say more about that, and I'll let her go. And Friday night, I thought, man, I'm going to go for a ride with the fire chief, get some action, run some calls. Zero calls when I was riding with the fire chief. Not even, nothing. But I got to visit the fire stations, and we went toward where the new fire, or the place where the new fire station's going to be. So, thanks, chief, for that. And I guess they want me to ride every week now, because that.
No call's a good call.
That's right. I said, hey, that's a good thing, right? And then, one other thing I heard about was the Santa Rosa Street Repaving Project. There was rumblings, but I went and checked it out the other day, and I'll talk to Kevin about it, but it's going to be okay. So, just bear with us, because it's going to be way better when it's completed. So, thank you, Kevin, and your department. So, that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Matt. Donna?
I wasn't going to call you Twinkle Toes, but I will say that that was probably the best fundraiser Casa Grande has ever experienced. It was absolutely the best night ever. And for you to be up on stage and to take, take that and just go, it was phenomenal. You did a great job.
For guys never tap.
We were, we were very proud. We were very proud of you. And I, you know, I just want to say, ditto on what Matt said about our loss here in our, you know, in the community. And I will say that in talking to the chief, and, you know, knowing that he made the call to that family, it was heartwarming to know that we have given, you know, them. And of course, there's a long way to go. We all know that has to go through the, the system. But just for the police department to do the work that they did in such a quick amount of time was phenomenal. So.
Less than a week.
Yep. And, which also kind of flows right in line today is the Arizona Peace Officer Memorial Day. As we speak, the governor is reading out 26 names that we lost this year alone in law enforcement. We did think about Tate Lynch and Julie Laura today, too. So, you know, it's one of those times where it's a really sad time in our community, but if we didn't have the police department, and we didn't have the officers out there doing their job, we, we wouldn't have the results that we have. So, on a lighter note, National Small Business Week, shop local, please. And I had the opportunity to spend the morning at the state capitol with the governor for the 17th Annual Award Ceremony for Volunteers. And it was great to be able to be there and be part of that. And I will say that one of the nominees around the state, they had over 150, one of them, was the Casa Grande Youth Alliance. So, it was really great that they got nominated out of all those. So, congratulations for their nomination. So, that's it.
Thank you, Donna. Mr. Lavender?
Well, I want to thank the mayor and city manager, Larry Rains, for including me in the meeting with Dr. Leckie of the introduction meeting of our new superintendent. I walked away enthusiastic. The partnerships established. Roberto talked about ecosystems tonight, and I know we can work together to do some things. And I also want to thank Larry for his support in having the alliance present tonight. I thought they presented some really good and helpful information for all of us. So, thank you. And I look forward to watching the videotape of you being Twinkle Toes.
Thanks, Jeff. So...
You got to move the others.
Yeah, I wish. So, anyway, for my report, the one single biggest thing, and I wanted to announce it tonight, and I'm happy to announce this, that Senate Bill 1239 passed out of the House into the Senate and is sitting on the governor's desk. And that is the $400 million for I-10 widening. It will be signed probably by tomorrow. So, you all should be yelling hallelujah because that's a huge deal. So, yeah, it's a big deal. And now we can work with ADOT. Anybody who would like to write a letter of support for I-10 widening can send it to ADOT, address it to the U.S. Department Head of Transportation, which is Mr. Buttigieg. So, but send it to ADOT. They will put together all the letters. And if you need, I think that our PIO can put some information out on our website, maybe. Am I getting a thumbs up there? Yes. Okay, got thumbs up. So, look for it on our website. We need it by May 13. It needs to be at ADOT's headquarters by the 13th. So, if we could send thousands of support letters to Washington, D.C., that would make a big statement. So, we're going after a mega grant, which is another $300 million. If we get that $300 million, then we're there. We are there. And we can get I-10 widened. And the project will start in 2023, not 2024, 2025. It will be one project, not four. And so, it'll all be done at the same time. And it's, that's a huge, huge step for us to improve that corridor that we all travel. So, I can't, I mean, I know you all know how important it is. Just really need everybody's help to make that happen. It was. It was. Get I-10 widened. And then on to the Boys and Girls Club, just to kind of give you an update. We had eight dancers and eight celebrities. The dancers were amazing. The celebrities worked really hard. And really, at the end of the night, the winners were the kids. We raised $135,000 that night, and money is still coming in for that event. So... Huge, huge night. And thanks to everyone who participated. Thanks to everyone who helped put it on, the board, the staff. It was a group effort. It really was. It was really, actually, it was a lot of fun. And even though I was watching it on TV in the back, but I would have rather seen it live, but it was still a lot of fun. Next year, I'm going to be one of the judges. I think I'm going to take, I think I'll take Miller's place. And then I can be Simon Cowell instead of him, especially when he's dancing. Anyway. Also, I wanted to mention that we have our summer internship program that's out. Please look online. All of the summer internship programs that provide students a glimpse into the world of the city of Casa Grande, into public service. The program lasts six weeks. It pays $12.80 an hour. So, and it's 20 to 40 hours a week. So, it could be helpful for somebody's college or just their bank account. It's in the areas of public works, finance, economic development, public information, office and attorney's office, police, fire, and the city manager's office. So, those are all the areas that we have openings for young people. And it's typically juniors or more. What's the age group requirement? Seniors?
High school, juniors, seniors, college freshmen, and sophomores.
Okay. So, high school juniors, seniors, freshmen, sophomores in college, those are who we're kind of looking for. Also, I want to remind everybody that the front of City Hall is under construction, if you haven't noticed. There is a lot of work on the sidewalks being done. Some of that is for ADA purposes. Some of it's just because our sidewalks are cracking and falling apart. But I think in the end, it will be nice. It should be a little more gradual walk up to the front of City Hall. That's some of the ADA work that's being done. Some of the brickwork's being removed. Some of it's being added back in. So, it's, I think it'll really look nice when we get done. But just be careful out there. And in addition, we will be getting out some additional information on the bond information, the charter information. You'll start to see that here in the next 30 days or so. We'll get that out in terms of public information so that everyone can kind of educate yourself on those topics because you will be asked to vote on them come November 8. So, keep your eyes and ears out for that. And that's all I have. Anybody else? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session. A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We'll stand adjourned till we clear the room. No, you can't leave yet, Mr. Powell.